Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, June 5th, 2023. Mr. C. Manjred, you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Graff, here. Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Atten?
Mayor Row.
Here. And Councilmember Atten informed us prior to the meeting that he would not be able to be here. I believe it's Irondale graduation night tonight, so he may be involved in that. With that, I would encourage people to check your cellphones and make sure they're silenced or otherwise assure that they don't disrupt the meeting this evening. Do we have any participants remotely online with us this evening?
Let me have a check.
I didn't see any signups before the meeting.
No, we do not have any at this point.
All right, then we can forego the instructions for online participants. With that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda is consideration of this evening's agenda. Mr. Trudgeon, as always, will check with staff to see if there are any changes requested from a staff perspective this evening.
Mr. Mayor, any changes by staff?
All right. Are there any council-requested changes to the agenda this evening, or any items council members would like removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
No.
Doesn't appear to be. This will be a chance to check with folks from the public. If you hear this evening for an item on the second page of our agenda, or the back page in Section 10, called approval, excuse me, approved consent agenda, there's items A through G. Normally, those items are taken up as a single motion at the end of the meeting with a limited opportunity for discussion or input because they're usually rather administrative or ministerial, but we do want to just check at the start of the meeting if there is someone here for one of those items. We can consider it earlier in the meeting, and so that you don't have to stay at the very end if you wish to either ask a question about an item or make a comment about it. And once again, this is strictly speaking, Section 10 of the agenda on the second page, the consent agenda items A through G. Is there anyone here this evening for one of those items in Section 10 of the agenda? Yes, sir.
I guess I'm not sure which Section 10. I'm wondering about the vacation.
No, that's in Section, the business item, Section 7 includes the public hearing on the vacations of easements, the considering a request to perform abatements on a property on Victoria Street, the Joint Finance Commission meeting, the interview and application process for commissions, and the city manager goals. Section 10 later on in the agenda is specifically those items that are listed on the agenda for there. And there is a copy of the agenda in the back of the room for anybody who may be interested. But that is just to go through it quickly. It's a, we approve our check register each meeting, we approve any business licenses, we approve other types of licenses such as massage therapy, or liquor licenses, or gambling licenses. We approve several final payments for public works projects that are completed and generally ready to be paid for. And then we have a resolution approving a special state law that was passed related to giving the city of Roseville the opportunity to go to voters next year for the possibility of having a local sales tax. So those are the items on the consent agenda. If anybody is here for one of those items, this would be the chance to let us know. Yes, sir.
I guess I'm all hung here for the Belmont Avenue one.
Okay, so that is under the vacations of right-of-way, which is in Section 7 of the agenda, 7A.
7A, yes.
And so all of those will be taken up earlier in the meeting, and so that's not part of Section 10 for the consent items. I would imagine that most people are here for the easement vacations, or possibly for the abatement of the one property on Victoria Street. So if you're here for that, we will have that earlier in the meeting, and you don't have to say anything now. All right?
Good.
All right. So it doesn't appear that we have anybody here for a consent item. We don't appear to have any changes from a staff or council perspective to tonight's proposed agenda. I would suggest a motion to approve the agenda as presented then.
No move. Second.
All right, move by Councilmember Schroeder, second by Councilmember Strawn. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and we have our agenda for this evening. Next on our agenda is public comment. This is general public comment, not specifically related to agenda items on the meeting tonight, but we do want to provide an opportunity at the start of each meeting if somebody's here to ask us a question about something to do with city business that isn't on tonight's agenda, or has an announcement of an event in the community or something like that. We do provide an opportunity at the start of the meeting for folks who may have such comments for the city council. So anyone here for general public comment this evening, not specific to an item on the agenda?
Yes.
Feel free to come on up. And we'd just note that for general, for all public comment, we do have a three-minute time limit per speaker. We do ask that you introduce yourself by either name and address, or name and street, to start your comments and direct your comments to the council. And if there are any requests for action, we'll try to follow up with those once the comments are done. Hello and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to start?
Thank you for having us. My name is Etienne Javi. I live on Sharon Street West in Roseville.
My name is Rick Sanders. I live on McCarran's Avenue, McCarran Boulevard in Roseville.
And we are part of the Juneteenth Organizing Committee, and we are here particularly to thank the city.
And to invite you.
I think the partnership last year was great. We have even better attendance at our Juneteenth celebration last year than sample, which in fact was the first time at our scale. And coming this year, we have a number of events set up, speakers, career tents where individual can stop by, especially kids and mid-professional in different career, so that they can be inspired to go into different professions. We will be having different entertainment, and wanted to thank the mayor for agreeing to be part of the welcoming committee to welcome people to the event, and that's why we're here.
And to be clear, I am not part of the entertainment.
No.
People are not coming to this event for the mayor.
Thought he was going to say.
But I'm happy to help out.
Well, I think as leader of the community of the city, it's really good, nice that you're able to be part of it. So we are really grateful.
And we also want to stress that this is a family organization, a family outgoing, and that along with all the entertainment and the things for kids, there's going to be some great food, which is going to be free. We're going to have, I think, police are going to be there. And we want all the people of Roseville to come out, because we want to show you the celebration of Juneteenth, of a black celebration for everyone. And we just want to thank you all for being a part of that.
So happy to do it, and grateful that it's really a huge event. And it's the date and time again for everybody?
It's going to be on June 17 at Central Park on Lexington from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
But come early.
Yes.
Especially for the food.
Rain or shine, we'll be having fun.
Great.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here this evening, and all the work that's gone into planning. All right, is there any other general public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, then I think we can proceed with our business items. We didn't have anything removed from the consent agenda, no recognitions or donations, so we'll jump right into business items. The first item is Item 7A, which is to hold a public hearing and to consider several resolutions approving the vacation of multiple street easements in Roseville. And I believe we have Stephanie Smith, our city engineer with us this evening to, Assistant City Engineer, I apologize for promoting you there, I probably didn't mind, but it's not official when I do it, to kick off the hearing this evening. And so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past several years, staff has identified areas of rights of way that the city no longer needs for public benefit. These were originally dedicated as streets, or in some parts, they were partial dedications of street areas. But a street wasn't constructed in that location, and we have no future plans to construct a street there. And so in an effort to right-size the city's land management, we've taken a look at these areas and are bringing forward a set that we think are the most simple of the vacation areas that we've identified, areas where we've received very little feedback and seem to have pretty straightforward, pretty straightforward land benefits. The owners would benefit from having more control over the former right-of-way area. It'll also help with confusion and disagreements over how the right-of-way area would be managed in regards to vegetation control and debris management. So I'm going to kind of go through each of these, and we can take a look at them. This is the proposed vacations map for this group, as I described it, being the more simple ones. Several of them are actually going through parks or intersect city property. Vacation B, which corresponds to Resolution A, is a portion of County Road C2 that lies within Oasis Park. And so the city would be the underlying property owner in this area, and the vacation will clean up the title work for the property. Vacation BB, which corresponds to Resolution B, is a portion of unimproved Ione Avenue, and you can see it lies between two parcels. Vacation C, Resolution C, is a portion of unimproved right-of-way between two properties on Millwood Avenue. Vacation D, which corresponds with Resolution D, is a portion of Millwood Avenue that bisacks Lake Josephine Park, which is Ramsey County Park. The original recommendation was to approve this vacation. However, we've heard from residents in the area that have cited a concern for Ramsey County Trail that does lie within this right-of-way area. So at this time, the staff recommendation is that the public hearing be held to hear from residents' input on this vacation area, but that Resolution D be tabled for a later date, so that staff could have additional time to examine the land rights for the trail to make sure that we aren't vacating the trail rights and ensure that the public has continued use of the access. The vacation item may be amended and brought back at a later date, possibly removing the green section that's illustrated in the PowerPoint. Vacation I, which corresponds with Resolution E, a portion of Terrace Drive that lies between two existing properties on Fernwood Street, portions of the right-of-way that are adjacent to the intersection of Lincoln Drive and Terrace Drive. These areas aren't needed for public rights of way. Vacation T, which is Resolution G, is a portion of Belmont Lane that actually, it actually bisacks an area that has a building built on it as well. So we certainly aren't going to be building a street through there. Vacation X, Resolution H, is a Lake Street alley, which it was dedicated as alleyway, but no alleyway is or would be constructed in this area. Vacation Y, or Resolution I, is a portion of unimproved Delwood Avenue. Vacation G, or Z, Resolution J, are portions of unimproved right-of-way that are located within Lake McCarran's Park. Again, the city would be the underlying property owner of this area, and this would just clean up the title work for the property. And just as a note, we have received several comments as far as phone calls and emails, but the majority of them have been asking, what is the vacation process? We did receive a comment from, hold on, from a resident who asked that her comment be entered into the public record. Amy K. Kerber at 990 Lydia Drive opposes vacating the trail rights at Vacation Area D. That's the one with the park. Hold on, let me bring that one back up again. She said she opposes vacating trail rights at this location, and wanted that to be noted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for staff on the various proposed right-of-way, rights-of-way vacations here? All right. And just for complete clarity, hopefully to work towards clarity, once again, this is property that at some point earlier in time, usually as part of plating a new development, was dedicated to the city for use for street purposes generally. And in, under state statute, as I understand it, generally speaking, if a municipality determines that there is no need for that right-of-way for purposes of building a street, that the city generally has an obligation of a sort to give up our right to build a street there and revert the property back to what would be the original property owners, the current property owners, who have rights to that adjoining properties. So in other words, if a street right-of-way was platted between two properties, and you're one of the residents or property owners on either side of that, likely, once we vacate our right-of-way and that is filed with the county, then the county has a process under state law that will revert the property back to the adjoining properties on either side, or if there's multiple properties, they'll figure it all out and basically give those property owners their back of their rights to the property completely, and takes away essentially the city's right to put a street there, because we're saying, we don't need to put a street there. It also, as Ms. Smith was saying, helps to clarify responsibility for maintenance of those parcels. Generally speaking, as you know, in the front yard of your own home, the front portion of your yard is owned by the city as part, or you may know, that's owned by the city as part of the right-of-way for the street that runs in front of your house. But the city doesn't come and mow just the first 15 feet of everybody's yard. That might be nice, but we don't do that, and I think everybody appreciates the ability to have their own control over that. But sometimes in these right-of-way parcels, there's some question, especially if it's between two properties, as to who should be responsible. And by vacating that right-of-way, it kind of clears all that up for everybody. So that's generally what we're doing. We're not trying to foist more property value on people and cause your property taxes to go up. That might be an unintended consequence, but that's certainly not our objective here. Generally, we probably, and I think the law recognizes that people have the right to the property that should be theirs, and that becomes an asset in your favor if you're a property owner. So hopefully that helps clear things up a little bit for folks who may just not completely understand the process either. As an official public hearing, we do have, as noted on the screen here, sort of a process, and it's very similar to what I said before in terms of public comment. We just ask that you begin your comments with your name and address, or street, if you prefer, for the record. You should certainly, this says five minutes, but it's actually a three-minute time limit by council rule. Address your comments or questions to the city council. We'll direct anybody who needs to respond to respond to those, if it's a question. And then it's one bite at the apple per speaker. You don't get multiple times to come up, although there's some discretion of the chair in certain circumstances, but that's pretty unlikely in most cases. And then certainly, this is not an entertainment opportunity here, so we're not looking for applause, or boos, or anything like that, especially given that there might be differences of opinion among the speakers, and we want to be civil and courteous to each other in that regard, and to the process. So those are kind of the rules of the road. We do have a couple of things we do have to do by process here, and one of them is to turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon to talk about the official notice of this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Published and legal mail notices have been provided for this public hearing. Legal notices appear in the city's legal newspaper, The Pioneer Press, on May 22nd and May 29th, 2023. Mail notices were sent on May 26, 2023, and affidavits of publishing and mailing are available in the office of the city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. With that, I should check again, and no questions from members of the council. All right, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. The process we'll use is fairly straightforward. We've got the one microphone there. And actually, Ms. Smith, if you maybe want to just take a seat in the audience, then we can have the two microphones, and we can basically have somebody speaking while the next person's kind of queuing up at the other microphone and ready to go. Once again, start your comment with your name and address or street, and if you have a name that's maybe not, one that everybody knows how to spell, once you're done with your comments or questions, you can step off to the side. There's a clipboard there, and you can just write your name so that we have the spelling, presuming that we can read it. So with that, I will open up once again the public hearing and invite the first person. There's no order of speaking, so just come on up if you're interested and willing to do so, and we'll try to be nice to you.
Paul Westermeyer, 1240.
Have a seat at the table. Make yourself comfortable. And the microphone sound will be adjusted for you, so all you have to do is sit down and speak. You don't need to touch the microphone at all.
Paul Westermeyer, 1240 West Bellman. I'm in favor of this resolution. I am just perplexed why this was not done long, long ago. I don't understand how this could still be the case.
Thank you for your comments and question. Appreciate your support of the process. Anyone else wish to speak to any of these right-of-way vacations this evening? Feel free to come forward. And once again, just state your name and street or address. We want to be as easy on you as we can and take some of the pressure off. We know that you don't always do this.
I'm Anita Barron. I live at 1755 Delwood, and there are two properties close to me when across the street, and one another, one property away. And I'm just wondering, how does one find out who the actual owners would be of those two properties? And this is, you deemed it as "Y" on your system.
Generally speaking, oh, I will answer, will I answer the questions once we're done with all the comments? I was jumping the gun there, but you may or may not be the last speaker, so you may get your answer fairly quickly, but we'll be sure and answer that.
And a second part would be, what services that are currently being given to those two properties would be changed with this measure? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak to any of these proposed right-of-way vacations this evening? All right, one more chance. Anybody wishes to speak to a right-of-way vacation this evening that's on our agenda? Seeing no one else, oh, come on up. That's why we give the second chance.
Yeah, George Schwartzbauer, 1797 County Road C2 West. I was just wondering, you're doing this, and you told us the reason you're doing it. Is there any underlying reason? Is there some use for this property that you're looking at, these properties? I live on C2, so Oasis Park, that property there would be the, that I'm talking about. And I'm wondering, have you any intent to use that for anything right now? The city, the original owner? So that's my question.
Okay, we can address that. And one more chance. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the right-of-way vacations that we've had presented this evening? Any speakers for the right-of-way vacation item this evening? All right. If nobody else is here to speak to that item, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then, and move to council consideration. We do have various questions. The first question is, why did it take so long? And I think it's because the old adage is, the wheels of government move slowly. A lot of times, these projects that built the original developments were done, you know, in the 40s, 50s, 60s, and 70s, when most of Roseville was built. And we've, the city and the developer built the streets that needed to be built at the time, and over time, we've determined that that was perfectly adequate. But the process of going back and finding all of those and vacating them isn't necessarily something that is the highest priority necessarily in the day-to-day operations of the city, and so that's why it's taken this long. But we do have the opportunity now to clear up a lot of these, and so there's actually going to be a few more opportunities over the course of this year to get at more of them. This just happened to be the set of them that were probably the quote-unquote "least controversial." So that's a little bit of the background as to why now. So as to who owns the adjacent properties, it can vary all over the map, but specific to, I believe it was Vacation Y, that appears to be, there's a property on Roma Avenue to the north that would own a portion of it. There is the Rose Vista Apartments complex to the southeast that may receive some portion of it, potentially even, depending on how the formula works at the state or the county, the city property that's the stormwater facility to the south might receive a small portion of it. But generally speaking, it's divided up in an equitable manner between the various adjacent properties. So in the case of this particular one, most likely, a significant portion of the north part of it will go to that property on Roma, and maybe some smaller portions go to the southern properties. And that's generally how it would work in most of these cases, is that there's, you know, if it's two on either side, they'll split the difference. If there's multiple ones, then they have to kind of look at how it is equitable for everybody. And then as to what changes to the adjacent property owners, essentially, maybe not a lot, other than you may have a little more property to be responsible for, you know, maintenance and landscaping and mowing, but somebody may have already been doing that, either one or both of the property owners, because the city probably wasn't coming through necessarily and doing maintenance on most of these. So that's probably the biggest change, and like I talked about before, it increases the asset of the property of the adjacent owners who receive those vacated portions. And then the question about sort of the underlying reason, like with the example of the property through Oasis Park, I think as Ms. Smith mentioned, you know, probably one of the most important aspects in that case is that it cleans up the title for the city's ownership of the park going forward. There may not be much more to it than that. But the primary purpose, once again, as I outlined before, is that generally speaking, because the city has the power to, for lack of a better word, take this property for the public purpose, or take responsibility for the property for the public purpose of doing a street, if the city isn't going to do the street and has determined that we don't need it for that purpose, then we don't really, as the government, have the right to hang on to it just because we have it now. And so that's why this process happens, and that's what we're here to do. So hopefully that answers those questions. We do have the request suggested by staff to table the action on Resolution D, the parcel that has the pathway on it, the access to the Ramsey County open space. I think that tends to make sense. So we would want to act on the other resolutions, either if the council feels it's appropriate to do it individually based on the fact that we might have different votes on different ones. We could do that. Otherwise, I think one motion to cover all the other resolutions would be a way to do it from a business point of view. I don't think that makes the resolutions invalid.
May I ask a question of staff?
You may.
Ms. Smith, can you clarify the concern of the person who was unable to reach out as far as vacating the trail rights, and what that means for, if that actually vacates ability to put trails through that area, or what that entails?
Certainly. There is a county trail that starts sort of where Millwood Avenue ends. At the western end of Millwood Avenue, there's a trail that goes out into the county park. And my understanding was she was concerned that a vacation may affect the ability of the county to continue to maintain that, and for the public to continue to be able to use that trail. Staff is asking this item be tabled so that we have more time to take a look at it, and see if the vacation may need to be adjusted to ensure that those rights are maintained.
Okay, so that Oasis Park is also being requested to be tabled?
No.
No, it is not. And that is due to the fact that if you look at Vacation D, there's a portion of it that is likely to revert to the private property owners that are north and south of the vacation area at the area where it meets Millwood Avenue, that green section. And since it would revert back to a private owner, that's where the concern is, that the trail may not still be open to the public.
I misunderstood. I was on the understanding that Lydia was discussing the trail rights related to the Oasis Park vacation, and that this is related to the Lake Josephine Park. Okay, sorry for the misunderstanding.
And that's in regards to the comment from Amy K. Kerber, who is not able to attend tonight.
Right, right. I just misunderstood which property she was concerned about, thus the additional questioning. Thank you for your clarification.
And just to maybe be extra clear, so currently, the county essentially has put in a pathway access to their property on that right-of-way, which the city owns, and probably it was done perhaps with some permission from the city. probably it was done perhaps with some permission from the city, hopefully. But if that vacation occurs of that right-of-way, it would, in that section, would revert to the two property owners, private property owners on either side, who would then control property on which there apparently is a county trail. And so that would create a potential issue with the rights of the county to keep and maintain the trail, and so the better thing to do is figure out the best way forward and bring that one back. All right. So just to go ahead, I'm going to take a minute to scroll back up the page here. We have several resolutions. And they are listed at the end of the request for council action, and that's what I was looking for here. So Resolutions A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, and J potentially could be acted on. And then Resolution D, which is this parcel on the screen, is the one that's being suggested to table now that we've had the public hearing. And we're not tabling it to a time certain, we're just tabling it in general. So maybe first of all, we could have a motion related to that item. The motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strong, second by Councilmember Shorter, to table
Resolution D.
Got it. And there is no discussion on a motion to table, so we'll move right to a vote. All those in favor of that motion to table that item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that item is tabled. Then we have the remaining resolutions, A through J, with the exception of D. Is there a motion with respect to one or all of those?
So moved.
And that's all of them?
All of them except D, which was in.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Strong, to approve the remaining resolutions with the exception of, as was noted, D. This, because the city is initiating the vacation, by state law, the resolutions must be passed by a supermajority, which is over two-thirds in the case of the Rose, and it's a supermajority of the council, not of the people here this evening. And so that works out to be four-fifths of the city council. So basically, a vote on this would have to be unanimous, just to be ultimately clear on it. Is, if there's any discussion on the motion from the maker, Councilmember Graff?
Not really. This just makes sense. I mean, as explained earlier, these are streets and alleys that were, at one time, we thought we would use, and we have not used them, so highest and best use of the land would require us to revert it to the owners so that they would have the rights to the property.
And as the second, or Councilmember Strong?
Nothing further.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we've got the motion before us to approve all the resolutions except for D, which was previously tabled. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, meeting the four-fifths majority requirement under statute, and so those resolutions are adopted. The next step, well, this will go to staff for then the required filing of the appropriate documentation with the county, and then the county will commence its process, and undoubtedly will then notify the property owners of the outcome of that. So thank you, everyone, for being here this evening on this item, and you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but there's no obligation to do so. Hopefully, we helped you understand the process and answered the questions you had. All right. Next on our agenda is Item 7B, which is to consider a request to perform an abatement of unresolved code compliance violations at property at 2165 Victoria Street. We have our code compliance officer, David England, with us this evening to present this item for council consideration. Mr. England.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As described, this is a request to perform an abatement at 2165 Victoria for unresolved code violations. Currently, we have numerous, I'll try and do this, not touching. Numerous vehicles that are inoperable, unlicensed, or the license plates do not match the vehicle's make and model. We have a commercial vehicle on an improved surface back to the side of the garage here. We have some various debris and items stored out on the yard area here. We also have some vehicles in the backyard area here. And included in the packet were also some photos of various outside storage items that are about the property. We also issued two stop-work orders on this property for work without permits. First one was for the expansion of the driveway area here, and the second one was for observed windows and doors that were replaced without permit or prior application. The property owner did apply for those permits today, approximately 12 o'clock, I'm not 100% sure of the time. So those items are moving forward with the stop-work order. We did, from the beginning, on March 29th, provided a door hanger to the property. We did hear back from a property representative that they intended to come into compliance and make progress towards it. On April 10th, we went back, we did not see any progress. So at that time, we did run the plates to see if they matched the property or if they were valid. They did not match the vehicles, so we referred that to Roseville PD for further look at the plates. Roseville PD did make contact with someone on site and did confirm that the plates don't match the vehicles. But since these were all on private property, PD referred it back to us. So then we went back out on April 19th and verified they were still there, and we notified the property owner at that point of the violations, and we sent a notice of a repeat nuisance warning. On April 24th, we did have someone come into City Hall to talk to us about it, stated they would bring the property into compliance and that they were in receipt of all of our notices to date. On May 10th, we received a second complaint about the property and of more outside storage and more uninoperable vehicles. At that point, we then did some more research, noted that it was an unoccupied vacant home, and so we notified the property owner of suspected rental, because the, it was, from our conversations with the person on site, they intended to not occupy it as a homeowner. So that, we have not yet had that registered as a rental. On May 24th, we went back out to observe if there are any improvements, there were not. We had received email correspondence from the property owner saying they would bring the property into compliance, hoping by over the Memorial Day weekend that they would do that. Due to the, 10 days before this council meeting, we did post the property on May 26th. We did observe that the posting was removed from the front door of the home within a couple of hours of our posting, and we did receive then an email from the property owner asking for a meeting with staff on June 6th or 7th, tomorrow or Wednesday. We did send response back to the property owner saying we weren't happy to meet with them on either date, but that this council meeting was going to be, and this hearing would be held tonight. We did receive another email today, asking if we could meet on Wednesday at approximately 4:00 or after 4:00 o'clock on Wednesday evening. So that is where we are at right now. The property still has violations, as noted, as of the writing of this and presentation of this, RCA. And staff is asking for approval of abatement of these violations.
All right, thank you, Mr. England. An abatement by the city would involve the city contracting people to deal with the various issues, impound the vehicles, clear the debris and things like that, and then the costs would be billed back to the property owner.
That is correct.
All right. And do we have a representative of the property owner or the property owner that's here this evening? So we won't be able to hear that side of the case this evening. Are there questions from the, well, actually, just one follow-up on the, if we have, if the staff has the meeting with the property owner on Wednesday, and maybe there's a resolution worked out or a plan, does the, does the staff want the council to perhaps take action on the abatement and then, you know, recommend staying the enforcement until such time, or how does the staff wish the council approach that?
If staff, if, council would be comfortable with giving staff that ability to meet with the property owner on Wednesday if the meeting does occur, and then decide at that point if abatement on or after Wednesday evening would be appropriate, staff would be comfortable with that, your direction.
Thank you, Mr. England. Questions from the council for staff? Seeing no questions from the council, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this particular item this evening? Seeing no one from the public wishes to speak to this item, we have the request before us to authorize staff to perform the abatement of the various code violations as outlined, with the costs being billed back to the property owner, and if not paid, ultimately put on the property taxes. There's some thought about authorizing the abatement and staying the enforcement until after the meeting. We can potentially give more time for abatement by the property owner to occur after the meeting, or we can leave that to the discretion of the staff, I believe. But I would be open to thoughts from the council as to how we might approach that or just order the abatement. That's the options I see before us. Thoughts from the council? Councilmember Graff?
Well, I think we could wait a couple of days, but I do think we should proceed with staff having the ability to enforce the abatement if they do not reach a resolution on Wednesday. From what you've written in the report and what you've stated, they've had ample opportunities to respond to this, so it's not like we're doing something very quickly with someone who may have problems of some sort that we don't know. So that would be my thoughts about waiting a couple of days and giving staff the option of enforcing it after that meeting or reaching a resolution that would be satisfactory to them, and I don't know, would we need to come back for that, or how would we handle that?
I believe we could give staff the discretion to extend the enforcement period through staff action if there's an agreement with the property owner to get it resolved within a certain timeframe. And then ultimately, we've authorized the staff to do the abatement, so that would seem to be the approach. I don't know if our attorney wishes to correct me in any way in that regard.
Mayor, I would never correct you.
Sometimes I need it.
I would just suggest that it would be very important for you to give certain, give staff parameters related to a deadline for compliance. I would encourage you to set a deadline for compliance. If you give staff the discretion to extend based on an agreement, what happens if the agreement doesn't work out? So it, I think it's fine for you to allow staff that discretion to give that extension, but you need to draw the parameters around that extension.
Okay. Councilmember Strong?
Mr. England, would 10 or 14 days seem like a reasonable amount of time, given the time that you've provided thus far? If they were able, if they indicated they were willing to come into compliance, we haven't seen much progress so far, so I think if we would have a fairly good idea within either 10 or 14-day period.
Either would be more than sufficient.
I would be in support of either.
All right. Other thoughts or perhaps a motion?
Motion to approve the abatement with a 10-day grace period at the staff discretion upon meeting with the individuals.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So the understanding is that the 10-day period would commence as of this action, and that if the property owner has not resolved it within that 10-day period, staff is authorized to go ahead with the city abatement? And that gets the opportunity for the meeting and action by the property owner? All right, discussion of the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strong.
No, I think it seems reasonable. I guess it does encourage them to meet with you quickly, because the clock starts ticking today. But I do think that's important, that they stay on, that they have a goal. It sounds like it encouraged them to come into the city today, so hopefully, if they're really earnest in their attempts to make forward progress, that will encourage them.
Mr. England?
If they do not choose to meet with us on Wednesday, or?
We still, we?
Would I still be waiting the 10 days?
The 10 days is the outside timeframe.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think that would be the understanding, is that that would be 10 days in order to show progress of some sort, or we're abated at that time. So it gives them a little bit of a delay, is my understanding. But if they fail to meet, or they reschedule or something, it's on their clock at this point.
Okay. As the second, or Councilmember Shorter?
Yeah, and I just think, you know, staff has done a lot of work on this already, and I trust their judgment on it, and I think the 10-day grace period is more than fair.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Graff?
I agree with what's been said, but also, we have to think of the neighbors that have been living with this situation next to them. So I think being 10 days is a very generous, reasonable amount of time, and I would support that motion.
Great. And I, just before we voted, I did want to clarify one point. You said that the permits for the stop-work items were received, does that include the driveway work as well?
They were applied for, they have not been issued.
Okay, got it, got it, okay. Thanks for clarifying that. With that, we've got the motion before us to authorize the city abatement of these code violations with an ultimate timeframe of 10 days from this action. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that motion is approved, that abatement is authorized. Thank you to staff and to the neighbors who've brought this forward to the city. That then brings us to a joint meeting with our Finance Commission. Why don't we take about a five-minute break to assemble for that, and then we can have our joint meeting? our joint meeting? All right, we're back from a short break. We've got the members of, there are many of the members of the Finance Commission with us this evening for a joint meeting, and we've got a number of things to talk about, so I'll turn it over to Chair Wanda Babys for introductions and to kick off the conversation.
So we have our very newest member, Karen, who has not yet even been to a commission meeting, so that's why, we just, we just met her.
Actually, I'm going to rearrange the microphones a little bit. If you can put more facing to Bruce, that way it'll catch both Karen and Bruce, because I know Karen has a lot to say.
Should we move this?
I don't have a lot to say.
And then the one for Ciappa can cover both you and Wanda.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
And you can push it away, once again, towards the center of the table, so that it catches both of you better.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go. Sorry for that rude interruption, but carry on.
That's okay, that's okay. So anyway, we have Bruce Bester put together this fun performance handout, which you should all have. This is the work on using equity markets to improve the returns on our city funds, which is permitted under Minnesota statute, as you see here. So this has been a while in process, and we're continuing to work on it. It's actually a good time to start doing that, because we're not at the end of a big, long, whole market that's been going up and up and up. There's been a little bit of a correction over the last couple of years. And so there's, if you want to just, maybe Bruce, you want to just kind of run through quickly what's in this handout?
So the genesis of this was, we, the Finance Commission sought, and you gave approval to investing in equity investments with additional approvals. And so it's, one of our recommendations this year has been to begin that process and to begin to make that initial investment. With that in mind, we've talked about different, at the commission level, iterations of what you're seeing here, and we would be required to work through the state and Board of Investments. There, we think probably that S&amp;P 500 index would be a sensible thing to do when the time comes. Michelle will need to put a package of information together for your approval when that time comes, when she feels it's time. But this gives a little bit of a look at the S&amp;P 500 index, at the history of what its performance has been, some of the history of that same fund at the state Board of Investments, and the very last page of the packet gives a look at what the difference might be to the city's investment return. For example, the top of that last page says that comparing a 2% return on fixed investments against a potential growth at 10% on average would result in $1.2 million accruing additional money to the city over a 10-year period. If you think that's an unrealistic assumption, a lesser one would be if there was interest on investments at 4% compared to 10%, would result in $900,000 over 10 years to the city. Or an even more conservative assumption, 4% versus 7% return would add $450,000 to the city's investment earnings. So that's kind of the thinking behind it, where we have that open recommendation to begin the process, and so we'll work with Michelle to find the right time to do that and make a presentation to you for your consideration.
And this would be using funds that would not be needed for, you know, a few years' time period, and that's what we'd work with Michelle on the specifics of that. But it's always important, when you're investing in equities, that you don't invest funds that you're going to need in six months, because you don't know exactly what their return's going to be. So these would be more funds that are being set aside for capital uses that would not be needed for some extended period of time. So, you know, the main purpose, we're kind of bringing you up to date to where we're at with this process, and we'll continue to work with Michelle on the appropriate way to implement it. So you may be seeing this coming your way in a request for official action possibly later this year. So, do you have any questions for us on it?
Thank you. I was going to make sure we had that opportunity. There very likely could be questions, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of points about the information that was presented. The initial balance that's being talked about being invested, it's about $1.5 million, is that on the basis of kind of what we expect order magnitude we might be talking about among the city's tens of millions of dollars of funds?
$1.5 million is 15% of the $10 million that's typically carried as investable funds.
Got it. And I know we have some limitations in both the state law that allows cities to do this, as well as in our own policies. And then, so the return that you're talking about over 10 years is on that $1.5 million.
Yes.
With the 10% average return versus the 2% interest, that's where the net return of $1.2 million comes from, on the initial $1.5 million.
Correct.
Just to kind of clarify those numbers for folks that might not have been tracking that at home, or on the council. So appreciate that clarification, thank you. Other questions from the council for the commission on this particular item? Councilmember Graff?
So when you're doing the projections on the last sheet, did you use any actual averages from the 10 years or 20 years past, or was that just for example?
Well, the second page of the packet shows the history, the 40-year history of the S&amp;P 500 index, and that, on average, has increased in value by 10.1% per year over that 40-year period.
Thank you, that's helpful. I just received this five minutes ago, so I apologize.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Schroeder?
Oh, not question, just, I know that the Finance Commission's been working on this for quite a while, all the way back to getting the policy change to, now going from policy change to actions, so appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this. I know it's been a long road, so thank you. I actually appreciate the examples particularly, because that helps, I think, people understand, you know, what we're talking about here. It's additional money versus, and of course, one thing, I mean, obviously, equities can go down and lose money, if you look at the, you know, the history, but again, over time, you do not want to invest in this for a short period of time.
Yep.
So I'm glad to see that you're talking, hopefully, like a 10-year or whatever that makes sense, if you're going to get into equities, so thank you.
So I think it sounds like you'll be continuing to talk and work with staff on this, and then bring back whatever recommendations you'll have as an outcome of that.
Yeah. And another issue that I just kind of want to, your feedback on, the city has this unusual situation with the general fund, and then this excess cash reserve fund, which most cities don't have. And it's occurred to me that that may be something that is confusing to the average citizen. They might go, well, if it's excess cash, then why do you have it? I mean, that's, so, so it's just something that I'd like to explore a little bit more on why we have these two funds, if it's necessary, if that should perhaps be folded into the general fund, and so I'm just interested in your thoughts on that question.
Well, and certainly it is, I think it is a part of the general fund already, and from the point of view of our financial reporting and our auditing, it's a part of the general fund, but it's a segregated, specific portion that's dedicated to this purpose. The notion being, of course, that if we happen to receive more revenue than we spend money in particular funds over the course of the previous year, and it puts us above our sort of target policy range for balances in those funds, the excess on top of that upper range of the balance can be swept into this fund. The notion being is that, you know, we may have either unexpected purchases we need to make as a city, we may have unexpected costs related to something like Emerald Ashmore or something like that, or we may wish to use that to provide short-term property tax relief if we've got a particular high increase to the budget because of certain things we need to do, but we maybe not want to increase our tax levy quite so high to the taxpayers. Conceivably, that fund could be used for sort of short-term taxpayer relief as well. So it's an idea that we're capturing some funds that otherwise may be in excess of what individual operating areas the city may need by policy, according to our range that we want those fund balances to be for the various operations of the city, and it's a way to sort of capture that money and be able to use it for specific purposes on an intentional basis. So that's kind of the why, and you probably, on the Finance Commission, were well-versed in that, so this is maybe more for the folks at home. I think some of the questions about how we report it, how we track it, and those sorts of things could be fairly obscure to the public, and so I understand that question. I think, from my perspective, it makes sense to kind of, to look at our, at those questions about it, and maybe come up with some thoughts and recommendations. Councilmember Schroeder?
Well, I can speak to this, because our, being on the Finance Commission years ago, when we were addressing this particular issue, was we wanted to make sure it actually was clear that there, otherwise it was hidden in the fund, if it was over or under. How would a citizen know if we had more money than we needed? And this was a way to actually show that. And then also, the policy is supposed to specifically say what that money can be used for. So if somebody is questioning it, you might want to refer them back to the policy. Well, when we have more, that it's, can be used for these different things that are, some of the things that the mayor talked about. So it was really more to make sure that people could see it, where before it was hidden in the general fund, and you didn't, unless you're on the Finance Commission and you're digging in and making reports, you would not know if the money was above or below, underneath, so that, and then it was also to help track over time what it was doing. That was another piece for historic, because before, you would know, you'd know what it was now, but what was the history of it? And so this way, when you actually have that fund, you could have the history as well. So that was kind of the backstory on that.
And I think just the other clarification I would make is that the, it was not all in the general fund, it was all in the various funds in which it was accumulated, which made it even more difficult to track, because it was in several different places.
Yep.
And I think one of the challenges also is that, as public funds, you know, if there's a lot of public funds accumulating in a particular operating area that may be in excess of what that operating area needs, those funds perhaps should be available for other uses in the city, rather than potentially asking for more funds from the taxpayers to cover those other uses. If we've got the money available, it's just sort of in the wrong bucket, so to speak.
Right.
So hopefully that kind of helps with some of that, but I did want to clarify that point about, which makes it even more obscure, like I said, that it's in each individual fund, right?
Which is why we do every year review all of the funds to make sure they're within that target range.
Yeah, so just, oh, just to add to what I wanted to talk about, so we're kind of a little confused with that excess fund and general fund. So with respect to what you just explained, so basically, is this in a, is this in a specific amount that is required to sit in that excess fund, unlike the general fund that can be reported at the end of the year? Like, say, maybe the city has this percentage of amount in the excess fund. I mean, is there a specific amount that needs to be sitting right there in the excess fund at the end of the year?
Could you move the microphone a little closer? I'm sorry.
Don't touch.
I think the question is, is it something where we determine how much it is?
Right.
No, it's strictly based on if a particular fund has had a particularly positive year in terms of cash flow, perhaps revenues exceeded expenditures for whatever reason, and it puts the fund balance of that particular fund above our high priority, or our high policy level of what we'd like to see for the fund balance. We just take that portion of the fund balance that's above our high policy level and put that into this fund specifically to be able to be used for other purposes. And so any given year, we've had years where nothing went into it, because all of our funds were in policy, or very little, you know, was outside of the policy range. We've had other years where, you know, we had a fairly significant amount of funds come into the city for various reasons that put us above our target level, and so there was a little more swept. But that's the nexus of the fund, is that it's taking, for each of our various operating funds, if there happens to be dollars there left at the end of the year that are above what we'd like to see, say we set a policy of, on the general fund, it's, I think it's 25 to 40% or something in that range, if that fund happened to have a balance that was, you know, 45% of the operating budget, then we would take that 5% portion, put it into this fund, and dedicate it for those specific purposes, if that makes sense.
And it was always harder, when a fund was above, before it was moved, it was harder to, one, realize, and then move it from a, one fund to somewhere else. So this way, it ended up somewhere where, then you could apply it anywhere. Before, it would just accumulate, and you might have other places where you were short money, and you have another place where you're way over, and if you didn't move it, it didn't, you didn't correct it, so.
Councilmember Graff?
Just to add into that, sometimes we have changed those ratios, or those percentages, using that amount historically, if that has been coming out of a certain fund, we've looked at whether we should change those. The other thing is, like, during COVID, things got very different, so that's kind of the purpose, in my mind, for the excess fund, is if we have some situation like that, or the mayor mentioned Emerald Ashmore, things that we can't predict, that's kind of what that fund protects us from, from not having the money to go forward.
Certainly, some future council might decide that the best policy is to, every year, you know, somehow give the money back to the taxpayers. We don't exactly have a, I don't even know if we have the statutory authority to, like, issue rebate checks to all the taxpayers, but we may have to, like, credit it towards a future increase or something like that.
Yeah.
There's options along those lines, too, being the notion that it is public funds, and it's not meant to be sort of a quote-unquote slush fund that could have negative connotations.
And I believe that's in the policy, that that is one of the options to do.
Hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to ask you, if you have things that you would like us to dig into in a little more depth this year?
Anything from the council's perspective? Councilmember Schroeder?
Well, only because we have the, the council had talked about having each of the commissions take a look at their charter, and to the purpose, and their duties, and just how it's all written, and to talk amongst your members and say, okay, what's working, what's not, and then think about other things that you think would be important, and come back and make some recommendations to the council on, you know, that, well, maybe our commission could do this or that, or kind of thing. So that was, that's a big one that we want to have you work on.
Okay.
And I think a memo was provided by Councilmember Schroeder and Councilmember Maretton, who are sort of our subcommittee on that, to the commission via staff liaison. You may not have had a chance to look at that, because I don't know if you've had a meeting since then, so.
Okay, so this is a reset.
Yes. Yes, so it's, it's a recent, recent council action. It's a request that we're doing of all of our commissions to, to do that, to take a look at, at your scope duties and functions. There's some, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to redline your existing city code language that defines the, the, the work of the commission. Unless you want to do that, it could be, it could be as simple as you kind of say, here's the things that we would suggest you take out, here's things we suggest you add, and then, you know, leave it to the, the code writers to do the details. It's completely up to the commission as to how you want to do it. We've, we've given the commissions, I think, three-month roughly timeframe, so three meetings. You may have sort of a general discussion in your first meeting to get the conversation going, maybe some refinement at the second meeting, and then some final recommendations in the third meeting is kind of, I think, how the council pictured it. But that's the idea. And it's really not meant to be that your scope duties and functions gets into like the minutia of detail necessarily, but rather that we make sure we're adequately and accurately reflecting what you are doing and, and maybe what you should be doing, and that we take anything out that, that doesn't make sense that's in there now. So hopefully that's helpful guidance for you, and we certainly stand for any questions that you have on that. Councilmember Schroeder.
I just wanted to add to that, something that we discussed in our meetings was, some of the commissions have one paragraph and some have pages and pages. So it was trying to find, kind of codify some similarities between them, so it's not to specifically come in and, you know, say, is there something wrong with the way things are done? It's really just to make it more understandable and actually more equitable across the commissions, like there's an equal, equal expectation. And so just people understand what it is that we hope to have them working on. And so it really, I think it was very clear when Bruce came for his re-interview, when he brought a bunch of information and shared a bunch of information, that the level of commitment and understanding of commissions really varies. And so it was kind of like, okay, we, how can we actually use that as a best-case scenario and a best practice, so.
And just to follow up on that, just one thing is, forgot to mention it, but also if a commission thinks that it makes more sense to have fewer members or more members, or meet less frequently or more frequently, depending on how often you meet, those are parameters that we also suggested that the commission take a look at as well. So it's not strictly just scope duties and functions, but also sort of, you know, the functionality of the commission in terms of number of members and things like that. And I think, you know, I, when I had my conversation with the Public Works Environment Transportation Commission about this a couple of weeks ago, they, they asked if the commission could make recommendations about sort of just general things related to being a commissioner or, or a commission and how it really, you know, how it works that aren't specific to a commission. I think that if those recommendations come out of your discussions as well, we would certainly take those and, and see if we can incorporate that into the bigger picture for all of our commissions. And whether it's a, something that we put in our code language or something that we just, you know, adopt as policy or procedure, you know, those, all those things are possibilities. So we're trying not to be too restrictive, but at the same time providing some, hopefully decent guidance for you on this.
Okay.
And just, I know I just, we just kind of brought this to you. If there are questions you have right now, I'd be happy to, as a council, try to address those, or we can do follow-up if you have questions you want to go through, Michelle, and kind of that process as well.
I mean, I don't have any questions right now, so wait and see.
All right. Councilmember Schroeder.
I don't know for certain, but as tonight, one of our consent agenda, consent agenda items is to address the local legislation and the referendum on the sales tax. And I would think that there may be some consultation on your part as the finance. I'm not sure, but it seems like there would be a possibility that the city would, the city staff would come to you with information. So I, I would hope before we plan to spend a lot of money, and it's a delicate balance where we ask for money before we can have money to spend, but we got to know what we're going to spend it on. So it's, it's a little more convoluted than maybe just going out and making a purchase at home, but I hope that we can maybe lean into your expertise in that regard as well.
Any other thoughts, Councilmember Graff?
Just, you know, you, your commission does great work, and I really appreciate it because all of us do not have your skill set. And I really appreciate when you get into the, the numbers side of it and you're, you're explaining it very clearly in, in your meetings. I see the same thing happening, so I just want to express my thanks, but.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Schroeder.
One of the things that I was thinking about is, you know, there's going to be new financial software coming in for the city, and I would hope that you would help in some of that versus, you know, helping, you know, what kind of reportings we need or what, how do we walk through this? Because anytime you do a conversion, more hands on deck, the better, because I have never gone through a conversion that went smooth. And, and that, we should set our expectations that there will be some, some problems. And, and so, you know, maybe you have some expertise in that arena that you could help walk through some of that as well. Just one more item to think about when you're looking at your, what you're working on for the commission.
And by the way, I love what you guys do.
She nerds out on it.
Maybe biased. As a former Finance Commissioner and Chair. And just in terms of the, a couple of things on the, on the property tax, you know, there's certainly, there's the analysis of the finances of the projects that are to be funded by it, which are pretty major projects, that, you know, the new Public Works facility, the new License Center, and, and dealing with the VFW. So there's, you know, there's the aspects of that in terms of the financial analysis of all of that. Obviously, we had consultants who came up with costs and things like that, so we're not asking you to check the consultant's work in that regard. But the other piece of it, I think, is, is, you know, had we not had the approval of the, from the legislature to go out for the referendum on the sales tax, we certainly would have been involving you quite a bit in trying to figure out how to pay for the project going forward without the sales tax, because that certainly would have been a significant challenge. I mean, we're, we're, once again, talking tens of millions of dollars, and certainly something we want to make sure we get right, and so would appreciate that insight from, from your commission. Anything else from the council's perspective that we'd like the commission to be looking at? Anything from the commission you want to make sure and cover with us this evening while you've got us?
I don't have anything more. I don't know if my other members do. So I just want to close with, first of all, giving kudos to Michelle, who is a wonderfully competent and helpful finance manager. So I might not have the title exactly right there, but anyway, she's been great to work with and is incredibly knowledgeable when we have questions. And also, thanks to you all for taking the time to serve the city. Every once in a while, I read articles in the paper about highly dysfunctional city councils, and I'm grateful to be in Roseville where you're here to get things done and not to settle personal scores and so forth. Thank you for your, your management skills and your dedication to the city.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, that's, that's a pretty good note to, to end on. Appreciate all the work that you folks do on the commission as well, and hopefully Karen isn't having any, any regrets as to having, just on the basis of this discussion.
Thumbs up.
This was your, your trial.
She does the center day job, too.
Thank you.
I do.
And volunteer.
I don't know that we need an extensive break to transition to the rest of the meeting, so we'll, we'll kind of go ahead and do that then. So next on our agenda, item 7D, which is to have a, continue a discussion regarding commission interview and application process. And I believe Assistant City Manager Rebecca Olson is going to be introducing this item for us, or bringing it back to us, I should say. Welcome back, Ms. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, this is a continuation of the conversation you had back in April regarding follow-up from the last commission interview process. And so tonight is really about getting feedback from all of you on what you'd like to see as part of this process. There's some information in your packet. There's a couple areas that we're looking for feedback on, particularly feedback on the application. There had been a request to have a potential second application for those commissioners who are seeking reappointment. There's information in there regarding the timeline, what that potentially looks like, as well as really looking for the upcoming midterm vacancy date to see if that works for you, as well as the interview questions. Just touching on those interview questions, it's really about, these are questions that are presented to applicants that may be asked. They're not necessarily the only questions or even all of the questions. So really just looking for feedback, some of those questions were taken from the interview, the most recent round of interviews, as well as some of the application questions. So I'm not 100% sure which area you'd like to start with, but I, I do have things if you'd like me to put up here. So, you know, if you'd like to start with the application, there are some draft questions in your packet. There's three sections of that application. The first section is contact information. The second section are the actual application questions. And then that third section are the demographic questions that we've started asking applicants probably within the last, within the last year. Those are confidential information. We do track it. We have, I think, one round of information on that, but that is not something that we, we share broadly. In, in this table here that's also in your packet, the, the middle column are the questions that are on the current application. And then the far column on the right are potential questions that you may want to consider asking for reappointment, but it is up to council what would be most helpful for you as you are reviewing these. So I, I can pause or I can continue?
Pause. I think that makes sense. Let's, let's kind of take these step by step here. So probably the first question to, the threshold for the council is, do we want to have separate applications for reappointment and for new applicants? And I believe there had been consensus that we do, so I'll just double-check that. Is there any objection to doing that? All right. So we've checked that one off. We will do two separate applications, one for new applicants and one for reapplication for existing commissioners. And then I, and then does council have feedback on the suggested, on the existing application language questions, whatever, or the reappointment language questions? And this is once again to the application itself. Councilmember Schroeder.
I like both sets of questions. I think they do a nice job being differentiating. And I'd say if there was one thing that I would like to see improved, and I'm not sure how to do it, is the commission preference. We've had a number of people who come to us and they have first and a second choice, but then they're like, oh, actually, I don't want a second choice, or I want this one instead. And so then we're not quite sure what we're putting them. So just maybe, maybe we just ask again, maybe they apply at one point, and then once they know what the openings are, we just confirm somehow. But it gets really confusing when we're maybe asking them about one commission, they're like, actually, I'd rather be on, so, and that happened more than one time, like in the middle of the interview. So if there was a way, maybe they add, because some people are like, I don't care, I just want to be in any commission. So I don't know, if there's a way to kind of narrow them down a little bit, and so at least at that time, maybe most current, when they're sitting for interviews at that time, we know what their, maybe 60, 40 is, you know, like, you know, just to kind of give us a ballpark, or is it 50, straight 50, 50, or?
Maybe that's a question to ask on the, the new applicants is, do you have a preference between your two choices, if you have two choices, you know, or something like that? I think we try to limit it, folks to two. We used to have applicants come in with, you know, they checked off all four of them or whatever, so hopefully that doesn't continue. But does that make sense from a council perspective that, that folks can?
It does.
Indicate if they, if they have a preference, you know, you want to word it in a way that doesn't force people to, to do that, but you want to make sure that they understand they have the opportunity to express that.
And they could say, and when they applied, they could put both, and then depending on what openings are available, but I just think prior to the interview, it'd be helpful to know what they think they're coming in for, because maybe one, then they only looked at one commission and then they didn't pay attention to the other one at all, and we kind of get them a little stymied too, because they're like, ah, I didn't know.
That's a good point. I think that might be part of the materials we can provide in advance of the interviews is to say, you know, if you, subsequent to your application, have developed a preference for one or the other, or don't want to apply for one or the other, let us know at the start of the interview process. That might be a way to handle that as well, just to recheck with folks. I was also almost going to suggest that, that we have people fill out an application for each commission that they're, but maybe on the new applicant, it might make sense to just sort of say, first commission, the two questions, second commission, the two questions, just so people have a chance to be specific about each commission on their answers to each of those questions. Because I do think people kind of mishmash it together right now, and it's kind of, we have to ferret it out.
And Mayor, just to clarify that, we do ask that on the, the application, that if they do have a second choice, they are asked to provide a response to that question? Anecdotally, I don't believe they always do.
Right, that's what I was going to say, so that if there's a way to distinguish a little more in that regard, where people can understand that they, they can answer the same question two different ways.
Or require an answer if they put a second one, I don't know.
I, I think having a second application for each commission of their choices is maybe going a little too far, but if there's a way to make it more clear to people to how they express about the answers to each question for each commission. Obviously, question number three, you don't have to do for each commission because that's more general. Other thoughts on the applications or questions on the applications? I think the only thing I've looked at on the questions, and this is on the reappointment one, the fourth question, I had thought about amending that a little bit, because right now it says, are there areas that can be improved to help the commission? And I thought that might have been almost overly general, where people might not know how to answer it. Are we asking about the air conditioning temperature in the meeting chamber? Are we, I mean, you know, that's a little facetious, but what I, what I was going to suggest perhaps is that we, we change it to, are there areas that can be improved to help the commission do its work or to help commissioners with their service on the commission? Just to kind of be a little more specific about what we're asking for. Does that make sense?
I like that. I actually would like to make a recommendation, though, that we maybe put that into the, if we chose to have an interview with that person, because that did provide some very good comments. But I think it might be helpful to have the, what is your definition of commitment? That can kind of come across as a little bit charged, or like that there's some, and maybe it's asked for a reason by the person, but I think maybe that could be part of the definition, the reappointment is like, how, what do you see as a commitment to this commission? Or how could, you know, how do you soften it a bit and find a way to, because I think sometimes that's the goal in getting the reappointment is, you know, are you ready to do this for another term? You know, can we, can we count on you to continue to, so, you know, what are you excited about? What did you do well? What's great? But can we count on you to have that same kind of excitement for another term kind of thing in the commitment realm?
I didn't even, I, I was even thinking we should take that out. I, I like that commitment question, too.
I do too, but I think maybe it would, people would feel, if they were on their own and not at a panel, they could put it in.
Oh, on the application.
I like that it's there, but that's why I was thinking maybe part of the application.
But not that wording either.
No.
I don't like the way it's worded.
No, but in the application, they could maybe have a little bit more time to suss it out and make it more meaningful how it applies to them. But I still think it's really important, especially when someone's saying, yeah, I have three more years to give this thing. You know, it's helpful to know, you know, we all have lives too, so, you know, it's tough. But I, I think it's a good concept, but I think there's maybe a way that can be a little more gentle.
And, and this is differentiating from the, what are you excited about in your reappointment? This is about, so I'm trying to help craft a little bit of guidance for wording, because exactly, you don't want to say, are you sure you're committed to this?
That's what I didn't.
We're going to shackle you out of this place, but.
So I don't know, if there is a way to perhaps put something in there, maybe we can let staff do some.
I don't know if it comes back to being an ambassador, like, you know, I don't know. That could also be a question if we chose to interview someone.
That's a good point, too. I think some of these interview questions, as we get to that, are, especially for reappointment interviews, are sort of asking people to elaborate on the answers that they put on the applications to these questions.
I don't think the assumption.
That may be the process.
Yeah, and I don't think the assumption would, should be that they have to be re-interviewed. It's just if they're, you know, if they are interviewed, I mean, this was, coming out of COVID, this was a bit unusual, and we had a lot of people leaving midterm and such, so that worked out. so that worked out to have them re-interview. But, you know, I don't know. I think we don't hope that that's the norm, but you never know. Hopefully we won't have another pandemic.
Well, and with, with the, knock wood, with the separate application for reappointment, I think that's going to help. I think if we, if we see the answers to these questions and we say, this isn't giving us enough information, that might be a cue to do an interview, either with one or more of the, of the applicants. But certainly if there is, you know, if there is either a fifth question or if there's a way to work it into one of the existing questions about sort of the, you know, we know this is going to be a three-year, an ask for three more years of your life, you know, besides what are you really excited about? Are you, I don't know, something, something about just that, that. It's like when you're up and re-upping for military service.
The only other question that I feel like is missing is that, and even in the questions, when we meet with the people, which is not what we're talking about yet, but is that question about equity and inclusion? You know, that some of the folks who maybe been on it for a while, not always sure that it's been ingrained that that's so important. And so, you know, how do we have an ongoing dedication to equity and inclusion in your commission? So maybe rather than the areas of improvement, but how, how can your commission better or, you know, continue to espouse the values of D E I J or whatever? I don't know.
Maybe we can continue to think about that one and.
Yeah.
We can always update our, our applications if we get more ideas down the road.
And reboard.
I like that. Anything else on the applications? I want to make sure, a couple of us have been doing most of the talking here. If there are other things that other councilmembers want to make sure we cover or don't like what we've been saying on some things, please chime in. All right. Staff fairly clear on the direction?
If you wouldn't mind repeating, Mayor, the rewording of that one question, or you can email it also, either way. Whatever is easiest for you.
Probably, I'll probably lose my notes here, so you may want to write it down here if you can. So it's, it's, the question is, are there areas that can be improved to help the commission? And I just added, to help the commission do its work or to help commissioners with their service? All right. That's very strong.
Have we considered asking people their pronouns?
Mayor, councilmember Strong, we have not asked that as a preference on our, our application. We do however, as one of the choices under gender, we do have non-binary, but we don't ask pronouns. We could, if, if that's a preference.
Do we ask it on employment applications?
No.
I don't, I don't know that people have been telling us it's an issue, but at the same time, I don't, it's a blank that people can choose to fill in or not fill in, so I'm not super concerned about adding it necessarily.
I'd be comfortable if it was optional, people could fill it if they wanted or not, but.
Let's give it a try, see what happens. Unless there's objection?
No objection.
Okay. Anything else on the application? All right. The second item was the sort of the, the timeline. Actually, I do want to just, before we get to the timeline, there was the section in the staff report about the interview and specifically timeframes, the length of the interview and the intervals in between. And in thinking about that, I'm not sure that we need to have a five-minute interview interval in between at each interview. Man, those interval and interview are just tying my tongue tonight. Because I think that can be a lot of five minutes adding up if we don't use them.
Yes.
But maybe we should schedule some catch-up time after so many interviews. We say, here's an extra 10 minutes for a break that can then allow us if we're a little off schedule. And I will make a commitment as the, as the chair of the meetings to try to make sure we stick to our timeframes and that may mean we get back to not everybody always asking a question every round, so we'll, we'll do that.
I think that's helpful because there could be a variable number of people who are present. So I think if we say we're asking five questions, it doesn't matter who asks them.
Right.
I think maybe every like 10, three 10 minutes and then a 10, a five or 10 minute break to catch up and then like, you know, like a half hour worth of meetings.
Three 10s of five and then three 10s of five.
Uh huh.
That may work.
Three 10s and a 10 or something, just to give us a moment to kind of catch up.
And certainly as we get to the next round of interviews, as the agenda is put together, we'll have a chance during the review of that to see what makes sense. You know, if we've got 40 interviews to conduct over two days, you know, we may go with seven-minute interviews and fewer breaks or something. I don't know, we'll figure it out. All right. Then on to the, we'll maybe skip over the interview questions part of it, which is the next item in the packet, but the second item that Ms. Olson had mentioned was that sort of the timeline suggested for the upcoming processes. Council thoughts on that? We've, obviously we've got the midterm process, which is a little shorter because we don't have new applicants and all of that. Excuse me, we don't have re-applicants, but we do have new applicants.
Mayor, would it be helpful for me to just quickly run through what this looks like? Or are you okay with?
No, I think maybe just quickly summarize.
Sure. So as council knows, we do vacancies twice a year. The main one is in where, when terms end at the end of March, and then we do a midterm vacancy. So the, the top part here in blue indicates the 2023 midterm vacancy timeline. Some of this is, is based on application period. Some of it is based on getting information into our city newsletter as well. And then we go into the annual vacancy. So one of the things that staff is suggesting, but is open for discussion is at the, at the December meeting, right now we have one meeting in December, is to have council receive the reappointment applications for those commissioners that are, are seeking reappointment and make a determination at that meeting if you choose to interview them. And then in January, we would then declare any vacancies. If you choose not to reappoint, you do have the option to appoint those commissioners seeking reappointment at that December meeting, or you can wait, but to make that determination so that when we're going into the application period, we know if we're advertising for those full vacancies or only those that are not being filled. And so then that goes into January where you would then open that application period. Interviews would be tentatively over a two-day period in February, and that is looking at what days are available in the council chambers here. And then March appoint, and then we have our two orientation and ethics training. Then just for future reference, that last midterm vacancy piece, we did move up a little bit. This year, if you look at the midterm vacancy at the top, it's roughly just shy of a two-month application period. It is shortened in 2024 simply for the fact that there is a very short turnaround time from when you would appoint in September and start that next application period for anyone that might be filling up a vacancy that might be up that year. That might be a little confusing, but we tried to extend it a little bit so that if they get appointed in August, they would still have several months to determine if they want to continue or, and reapply and be appointed again in April if that is the short term. So I don't know if that made sense, but.
They have a couple of months.
Yes.
And that would only be, that would only be people who would accept a partial term.
Correct.
So that was going to expire this next coming year.
Because some of the partial terms may go out one, two or three more, well, not three, but two more years.
Yeah.
But given that that time period is, is out a significant amount of time, it, we can, any of these dates can be changed.
Sure.
I'm comfortable with that. I think that helps everybody knowing who, how many people you're, you're interviewing for gets us all in a better spot. So I mean, a lot of that last meeting in December is mostly just signing off on things that we're well aware of. It's not a lot of new business, would require some more forethought on our part to read materials and such. Would someone feel comfortable applying six, five, six months in advance? Well.
This is for reappointments.
For reappointments, yeah. And things could change come by that time, but.
Well, that's never happened. I think the only thing about the, the annual timing that I, I want to be respectful of is if we have a changeover of personnel on the council, new councilmembers may want to weigh in on the reappointment of, of existing commissioners and whether to do interviews. So I'm, that's the only thing that, I, I think that we could still have the October timeframe to start the process. We might have to have that very first meeting of January be that point when that decision is made. Because I, I, you know, there's always that concern about lame duck counselors, councilmembers making decisions for new councilmembers in that regard on something that's going to be in place for a period of time to come in the future. So that was the only thing that came to my mind as I looked at it. And I don't know if the rest of the council thinks that's not that important, you know, we can just leave it the way it is. But I wanted to at least broach the subject with the council because that, you know, may be an issue for new councilmembers.
There are lots of things we act on that new councilmembers have to deal with, so I would not look at that as a.
Yeah, well, and I just think that first meeting in January is, has got a lot of things we have to decide. So, you know, a lot of them are just parliamentary type things, but still I do agree that the, there's always going to be time. If it's always in December, every new person's going to always come in on that. Like if it changes, I think that's more problematic, but I think if it's the same every time, it's easier.
And certainly anybody who's elected in November is, is going to know that they're going to come onto the council and can certainly try to provide feedback into the process.
And it's every other.
Right.
It's not every year.
It's not every year, right.
And their term is four years and the terms of the commissions are three, so.
And that gets to the, the question of changing the timeframe in 2024. I don't know that we really need to move it early because it's really only impacting those fraction of reappointments that happened and only be for the part of a term that's up the next April. So I don't know that we need to, to do that. I think we can maybe think about it some more. Maybe we don't have to set those dates for '24 quite in stone yet, but I, that would just be my initial feedback unless councilmembers think otherwise. Seems to be some concurrence with that.
I'm comfortable with knowing, it's nice to know well in advance when the counter, when the council interviews are, since they're generally off meeting days. Of course, I already know that I cannot be there in August, so.
Well, and that's, you know, that's a good point. So we may, we may want to revert back to the, the current timing in 2024 for now as the plan, until we get closer to that timeframe and we'll have gone through this year's round at that point.
They are recorded, which helped because I had missed one last spring because it came up suddenly and I had other plans, but.
It just seems to me that, that it's such a short period, a short difference in timeframes.
Right.
Basically a month. I don't know that we're, I don't know that we're really impacting things for those few individuals that much one way or the other necessarily.
I do struggle with an all-summer application and approval and orientation, just because a lot of people tend to be away. And so, and I also wondered where students fall into this set of timeframes.
There's a whole other discussion about that.
Yeah, there is, and yeah.
Mayor, councilmember Strong, students have a different term for their process, so there's.
Other day, different topic, different, so, okay.
And I think we've asked that that be looked at again, and I don't know that we have any good answers yet as to what the best timing of that is, because it gets into when's the best time of year to recruit new commissioners? When do we want them to start? How do we get them a term that incorporates a full school year, all those types of things? So it's still out there, but that, yeah, that's, luckily this is just for our non-student applicants. All right. We good on the timeframe then? It sounds like we'll stick with everything on the top two parts and we'll adjust the 2024 back to the 2023-ish timeframe. All right. Then interview questions. And once again, these are suggested interview questions. Honestly, other than the commitment question, I didn't really have much to add to what was already in there. Council, other thoughts?
I think these are good questions and I get, I just think when I applied to commissions, how much this has improved. So I, I liked what was done. I thought staff did a good job of condensing it and making it straightforward.
I appreciate that. It really speaks to whether people paid attention and they did their homework. You can tell almost immediately if someone doesn't know what they're, what they're applying for. And that maybe seems unfair to them, but we need a level of preparation. It's like going to a job interview. You know, we ask that you know what you're getting ready to do. I'd say there might be a little bit, a better way of, we all kind of finesse the questions a bit so that we got what we wanted out of the answers. And so I think, you know, why do you want to serve on, you know, what interests you in serving on this commission? Or what skills do you have that you think would, you would bring to this commission? So maybe just trying to make it into more of a discussion-type piece and less of a yes or no type thing, you know, where people have to really ask them to describe or relate or, you know, provide a situation. You know, obviously we don't have a ton of time, but we've seen it done well. And we had a couple rounds where we were like, woo, we did a great job. So I think that can be done well. I think there's a lot of repetition in the reappointment questions and maybe that comes up if we have to, if we go to that point. But I'd say maybe the bigger questions about, you know, how can the improvement and the, you know, what, what can you bring? What more haven't you, haven't you brought us yet that you really think needs to still be done?
And obviously for the reappointment process, that's going to be a function of whether we're doing it and all of that. But I think, I thought that these questions generally, other than the commitment question, were elaboration opportunities on the answers in the written application. And maybe that's all we need for that process.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But I think the wording, even on the, in the new applicants, I, I agree sort of, why do you want to serve on this commission? It kind of sounds a little accusatory, you know, like you're under the hot lamp in the interrogation room. There might be better ways to just express it a little more, more softly.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'd just like to reiterate that best practice for interviews and equity is that everyone is asked the same questions and we provide them in advance. So people, some people just don't think on their feet and that shouldn't preclude them from the ability to be on the, this is not somewhere they have to be the spokesperson for a Fortune 500 company. They come there, have the opportunity to come prepared to the meeting, so they shouldn't have to think on their feet and be able to craft some fancy thing. But if they have a time to thoughtfully respond, we've seen so much better answers in the, in the interview process. And I think that, that's great. So I think clarity and maybe just a little bit more, tell us a situation where your skills would apply or, you know, kind of maybe a little bit more descriptive on their part. But what, what do you love most about living in Roseville has been some of the most enjoyable answers.
All right. So it sounds like not too much to change on the interview questions, obviously except for the one question we've talked a number of times about already. All right. Anything else from a staff perspective that you need in terms of guidance on this process?
The, Mayor, councilmembers, the only other question I would ask is, is there anything else that you would find helpful as part of this process for the applicants to provide or for staff to provide that will help you in making decisions or, or clarifying anything?
Nothing that comes to mind right now. I think the only thing just, not related specifically to this process, but I know we had some attendance issues on a commission or two over the last year, and I think it might be good to sort of more early in those situations, get communication to the council about that.
Yes.
You know, or quorum issues, those types of things. Because we want to be sure that if there's, I mean, obviously I don't know that we're going to go to people's houses and drive them to the commission meetings or whatever, or round them up from whatever else they're doing, but, but I think we just want to be aware of issues as soon in, in the process possibly, yeah.
Yeah, especially if they can have a forum.
Yeah. We, we want our commissions to be able to do their business.
Yeah.
I have a question about background checks. Is it promoted when people, is that advertised that they will have to have a background check?
Mayor, councilmembers, I don't know that we promote it, no.
Do we mention it?
Do we tell people? I believe we. I believe we do, I'd have to go back and look at some of our materials.
Do you know if it's precluded anyone from?
No.
Okay.
No.
I just know that as more and more, um, organizations, you know, have banned the box, I think it might be helpful to, if we, we share that they will have to have a background check. But what the purpose is of it, um.
And it's really specific, I think we've, in our council decision-making discussions about it, it's really specific about commissioners who are going to be, uh, have an opportunity to work with young people. Uh, and now that we have youth on all of our commissions, that kind of qualifies all the commissions basically. And so if we explain it that way, hopefully that's more helpful to people that we're not, we're not looking at your credit history necessarily and things like that. It's really about issues related to working with young people.
But if you had a felony that was unrelated to children or something, you know, like want people to know, because people who have a criminal history or drug offense may be reluctant to do it if they know.
Mayor, councilmembers, I do believe there's probably something on our application when we talk about data practices and privacy as well as our background check. Um, but you are correct, uh, councilmember Strawn, that the background check has to relate specifically to the role that they're filling. Um, and so it would be in, um, cooperation with our police chief as well as our city attorney where, um, a decision, if anything were to come up, um, that would be made. But we have not, even across employment, um, have rarely ever had any background checks come back where we would precluded them from employment or volunteer efforts.
Thanks again, appreciate all the staff work on this and, uh, we'll just load you up with some more work when we get here back from all of our commissions about their scope duties and functions. All right.
Thank you for your work on this, very important.
That brings us then to our consideration of the, uh, 2023 and 24 City Manager Goals, item 7E. And I'll turn it over either to City Manager Trudgeon or perhaps the Subcommittee Member, Robin Schroder, for introducing this item.
You want to start or should I?
Uh, I didn't have anything prepared necessarily, so we just jump right in.
Okay. As we, as, um, the council recalls, we had our, um, session with our city manager with his review. And we had a discussion about the goals and there was a number of suggestions and thoughts at that meeting. And we took that back, um, Commissioner Etten, um, had took, took the notes and then went back and we worked with Pat on, um. Updating what we originally had. And I thought if, uh, um, people will give me the moment here, I would just go through and explain what we had changed. Or, um, added to the goals and there's, there's not a, a ton, but so it won't take a long time, but I thought that would be a good place to start. And then once I go through the changes, if people have comments or, um, thoughts, that would be great, so. Actually, so when we first, um, looked at this, the, um, on page one, it talks about the, uh, first one is the visioning through the strategic plan. Actually, the, um, only thing that people commented on and wanted to change was under the timeline, the millstones. That we changed that last part from February, March, you know, all the way to April. So to give him more time to work on that, so that was that piece. Where most of the changes were, was in the next goal, which was the future financial sustainability, uh, piece. And I know there was a number of comments on this and, um, Pat went back and reworded a couple of the paragraphs, but, um, a few areas. Um, the, the, the first one is, is pretty much intact. The second paragraph, he talks more about the, uh, refinement of the city's 20-year capital improvement plan. Which part of this piece is, um, he's trying to adjust for the ARPA going away. So that's something, um, unusual or different, you know, a lot of the things that are talked about are some of the things he would do on an annual basis because of the ARPA piece. It adds another complex area to that, so that's what that middle paragraph. And then the, the last paragraph was, um, talking about, you know, the, um, really the sentence in there. Um, we'll work with the financial or finance department and department heads to provide significant oversight of budget and fund balance to identify negative trends earlier. And to make adjustments, what this is doing is we talked about the water bill issue, um, and, and, you know, come, going forward. And, uh, putting in processes and policies to, uh, fix that. But what this does, it broadens that, so what Pat will be doing is looking at all of the funds. To make sure that there isn't something that's, so then we would know much earlier if there was something happening in the fund. Where instead of waiting till 18 months later when we heard about it. And so, um, that, that's what this, this little paragraph is talking about. It's really, um, it's a broader piece and it's also looking at the short and long term of those funds. Because you have the budget and then you have the funds on that piece. So that was the, um, update in that piece. And then under the, um, uh, the next goal, when we're talking about the, um, implementing our, um, you know, our, our, our different plans. Or, or pieces of our plan here, the one piece that, um, was suggested that in that last paragraph under background. Is that it should be supported by data and other measures. That was a, a, um, part of the sentence added in there. It was thought that we needed to, um, support what we're doing by data and other measures. Because how do we know if we're getting there or if we, you know, this way, there's some measurements added to that piece. And then under the, um, the next goal, or wait, no, I almost forgot this piece. Then under the, um, milestones, um, there was the added, the very, very last piece under November, December, 2023 through January, 2024. Um, there is the, uh, last bullet point is, um, it was added at the end of the sentence, new goals and objectives that can be measured with data. Again, putting that, the measures and data in, in, um, the milestones as well. And then the, uh, next goal, which is the increased operational oversight. The piece that was added under the background, under that first bullet point, the last part of the sentence added. And maintain internal controls and review. And again, that's, you know, adding in those objectives and what we're trying to do. So those, that's a quick overview of what was added and a, a little more on why we added that piece or changed it on that one goal. But for the most part, those were the pieces that we got from the, um, conversations we had. And at this point, I would, um, like to hear what people think.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Schroder, and I did want to point out, uh, just maybe for the benefit of the public. That the, so the four areas of the City Manager Goals are, number one, to implement the community vision, uh, through the strategic plan. Number two is to focus on future financial sustainability. Number three is to continue to implement the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, or SREAP. Uh, and then the final area was to increase operational oversight and this, uh, covered a number of different areas, uh, but we've got a, there went glasses. This is why I don't spend a lot of money on glasses. All right, so the, uh, that covers a lot of different areas. We've got new financial software coming online, we've got, uh, the completion of the classification and compensation study. Uh, continued improvements in the hiring and retention efforts sort of under, under that SREAP process. Uh, and then implementing, uh, some other things related to how we do our business and the city website. So there were a number of things that are fairly substantial projects coming up this year that we wanted to make sure as an, as an area of focus for Pat that he was focusing on. So just to add that context. Anything, uh, as Councilmember Schroder said, any feedback councilmembers have on these?
I think we covered them, I think that's thorough.
I think the only thing that I might add is that, uh, under the implementation of the SREAP, I think we did have some discussion on the milestones. And I think it's in there, so I'm not concerned about it, was that the, I think that's in the, um. November through January timeframe, you know, the workforce report will be done by that point. And then that's when we start to talk about updating the SREAP with new goals and objectives. I think the, the key piece for me was new goals and objectives.
Yeah.
Because I think we want to continue to move the process forward and that was definitely something we talked about during.
And with measured data like that, so I thought that was very important, too.
So it's, it's, it's both the data part, which we're doing well and we want to continue to do well and we want to use the data we've already accumulated and learned from. But then that part about saying, okay, you know, we've, we've been working on these particular objectives and goals in our current SREAP. And we want to make sure that we're continuing to evolve the document forward, uh, and that's a key responsibility for Pat in that area, so appreciated that focus there.
Good.
Anything else on this, any other questions or otherwise, uh, I think the requested action is a motion to approve the 2023, 24 City Manager Goals and Objectives.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, second by Councilmember Graff to approve those goals. Uh, any discussion on the motion as the maker, Councilmember Strawn?
We've spent a great deal of time on this, um, and so none of this is new to us or not essentially. So, uh, I just hope that this provides some of the guidance you were looking for a bit ago on what to do moving forward. And hopefully we look forward to seeing what exciting things that come out of what, what we learn in the next year.
Right, uh, Councilmember Graff has the second, any comments?
Well, I think the committee deserves a little round of applause because I think you did a very good job, you and Jason Etten. And, uh, it really came together and we had this broad range of information and then we kind of brought it into something that is easy, easily digested and understood, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? We have the motion before us to approve the 23, 24 City Manager Goals as presented. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, 4 to 0, and those are approved.
You have your, your marching orders.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Just get it all done.
Yeah, just get it all done.
All right, well, we've given you the time. Uh, next, our agenda is consideration of a boatload of, of meeting minutes. We have the minutes from our May 8th council meeting, our May 15th council meeting and our May 15th EDA meeting, as well as our May 22nd council meeting. Are there any changes, corrections or, uh, things that need to be dealt with on those individual minutes? Or is there a motion to approve all of them as presented or any other motion? Councilmember Schroder.
I cannot approve all of them because I was only here for one of them.
Okay, so which one were you here for?
The eighth.
The eighth, all right, so we could do a motion for the eighth and then a motion for the rest unless there's others.
That makes sense.
We need to do, all right, is there a motion to approve the minutes of council meeting on May 8th?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, second by Councilmember Graff, any discussion on that motion? This is as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, those minutes are approved. Then we've got the minutes of our two meetings on the 15th and our meeting on the 22nd.
I would move approval of the rest of the subset minutes for the EDA and the.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Strawn to approve the remaining minutes from the May, May 15th meetings and the June, meet June, May 22nd meeting. Getting ahead of myself, we can approve the June minutes now, right? All those in favor of the motion, if there's no discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. One abstention from Councilmember Schroder. So that passes 3 to 0, that brings us to our consent agenda. No items were removed, so Mr. Trudgeon, would you go through the items on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item 10A approves payments in the amount of $324,092.79. Item 10B approves various annual, uh, renewal business licenses, including for cigarette tobacco products, gas pump and gas station licenses. Massage therapy establishment licenses and veterinary examination licenses. Item 10C approves one THC license for MGM wine and spirits at 1149 Larpenter. And a new massage therapy established license to Robert Testament at 2201 Lexington Avenue. Item 10D approves a resolution accepting the work completed for the 2022 pavement management program. Starting the one-year warranty for the work and authorizing final payment to the contractor. Item 10E approves a resolution accepting the work completed for the Fairview and County Road C storm sewer improvement project. And starting the one-year warranty for the work and authorizing the final payment to the contractor. Item 10F adopts a resolution accepting the public improvements related to the Twin Lakes Third Edition Public Improvement Contract. Then finally, item 10G adopts a resolution approving the special law passed by the Minnesota Legislature. For the city of Roseville to conduct a local referendum to impose sales and use tax in the amount of one-half percent in the city. And would note this is a requirement of the law that we pass this resolution to formally accept it, and that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon, thank you for clarifying that item. There's a whole host of steps that we'll have to take, but if we don't take this first one. I think within a certain timeframe after the law was signed, then we don't get to take any of the other steps.
It's actually before they reconvene, which is not till next year, but it's good enough to get it done now.
Right, all right, uh, with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
By Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Schroder to approve those items, uh, the discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes unanimously, those items are approved. Next is, uh, future agenda review, communications reports announcements, we'll begin with the City Manager's future agenda review.
All right, so our next meeting will be June 20th, and I would note, I know you're all aware, but that's on a Tuesday night due to the Juneteenth holiday on, on the Monday. Uh, as of now, we have, uh, a couple of proclamations, we also want to begin, um, discussions about the city budget and more, uh, specifically on any legislative impacts. I think there were a lot this year, so we'll spend some time on that, try to get what valuation information we have from the county. And also talk about any budget priorities that the council may have. We also are looking to have, uh, two public hearings for liquor licenses, one for Par 365, this is the indoor, um, golf simulator business. If you remember, they came to us last year, we made some changes to our liquor license laws. And then also for TIOs, which is at the Cedar Home Community Building as well, uh, for their liquor license. Uh, on July 10th, uh, in, uh.
July 10?
Yeah, um, I meant to put the New Tracks, I think, on, um, Ju- June 20th, so that's on the wrong date. So New Tracks, uh, some of you may recall that was a circulator bus, uh, area nonprofit that we, 2017, 2018, provided some funding for a circulator bus. Uh, they are in the process of potentially receiving, uh, a pretty significant grant award and would like to restart a conversation about, um, doing that here in Roseville. And of course, maybe looking for some assistance on that, so still getting some information on that. So tentatively, I'd like to have it on the June 20th to have some conversation, so I have that in the wrong column, so my apologies. I got the whole thing wrong here, don't I?
Yeah, these two are in here again.
Yeah.
They're all in there.
All right, well.
Oh, yeah. So the 10th is going to be just a repeat of the 20th.
Yeah, I, I am sorry, uh, I don't, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, we have a meeting July 10th, let's keep it that way and then I will provide an update. I also, I don't want to have this right here. A new document for you and thank you to the mayor, and we don't have to go over every word on this because it's a lot of information. And I have a handout here for you, so you can see it as well. This is, uh, for those who've been in the council for a little bit, I used to have a back page on kind of items for future scheduling. And I thank you, uh, to the mayor for helping with the format, so including a lot of things that were either council-initiated in the past or things that we know that are happening. So for instance, you'll see the hotel licensing conversation, the classification and compensation, um, cannabis regulations we'll need to do. I did separate the budget process into kind of a separate, uh, category at the bottom, so you know when those days are coming. So a lot of these you may already be aware of or anticipate, um, but some of them, we do need to have some direct conversations. So right at the top are things that were left over from the previous report about solar energy screening, uh, single-family rental, uh, inspections, pet licenses and stuff like that. And what I would suggest is maybe have a future, uh, agenda item on these items to kind of go through this in a little bit more, um, detail. Especially those ones that were brought forward, do we know what's the timeline, are they still relevant, when do we want to do that?
That the first three?
No, first three and I think probably, um, for sure, for, the, well.
I think the, the other ones, the next couple are less.
Yeah.
Stale, so to speak, than.
Yeah, I'm not sure about what councilmember had and brought forward about the inspections for the single-family rental, if that's still interested, but.
Looked that one in.
Yeah, yeah, so I would, maybe, but, um, and I would know a couple of longstanding ones, zero waste packaging, compostable containers, as well as city speed limit review on local streets will be brought forward as part of the P WEP meeting, which is July 10th, I just remembered.
Joint meeting with.
The joint meeting, yeah, so they'll be bringing back, uh, conversation about those two items. So that's kind of, um, takes care of those at least here initially. But as I said, some of these things will be dealing at some point here, hotel licensing, cannabis law, update, uh, SREAP. Sacred settlement code, strategic planning, all those things you can, you can anticipate, you know, we'll be talking about at some point. But just to get on everybody's radar screen, so when they pop up on the future agenda, you're kind of like, yeah, that's right, we're going to talk about that. So I'll try to present this every, uh, meeting here, just kind of give an update, we can check in real quickly, but I think to. Uh, right size this list, we probably need to go through it and make sure there's anything that has been on, um. there's anything that has been undecided here, kind of what our marching order is moving forward on, especially those ones at the top.
So you're saying at a future, an upcoming meeting, we'll take a look at these and provide some refinements, perhaps, from a council perspective?
Yeah.
That might be an item, I suppose it could be in section 8 of the agenda to refine this list?
Yeah, it could be, yeah. Or business item.
Or business item, okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions on the future agenda, such as we knew it, or this, as we've got it before us? I should note before that, the one other aspect that I suggested that staff do is put this in the packet as well, the physical packet, so that every, every meeting, we've got a, you know, it's not just a slide on the screen, but it's actually something that's in the packet for both the council and the public, not just this, but the future agendas as well, so that that's all available. That was my only other suggestion there. Future agenda items or council reports and announcements? I did know Councilmember Schroder had an item, so Councilmember Schroder?
Yes, I wasn't sure where to put this in, but I think this is the perfect place. We, as everyone, got an update from our city manager on the Victoria Pathway piece. And since there's so many moving parts, and I know, like, Shoreview is considering what they're doing tonight, and the costs have been moving around, I think it would be good to update the public and the council on what's happening with this particular project. So I think that would be something we would like to add to the list on getting updated on. Because there, you know, we've had, as you know, we have had contact from, you know, some people, but just to keep us in the loop, because I know the cost did go up, and I know our public works, you know, head, head of our public works did come in and talk about some of the money, where it was coming from. And I think it would just be good to have it more in a packet so that the whole public could be updated on this as well as the council. So I'd like to see that added.
Certainly. Do you have a timeframe, Councilmember Schroder, when you would...
I, you know, I was, because I know you had originally talked about it when you updated us, that you said, you know, bring it back on the June 20 meeting. Whenever I think it's convenient for you to update it would be fine with me. I just, I just think there's just been a lot of moving parts, and it would be good to be, and I know it's going to be ongoing, but I, so that might be why it might end up on this list.
Yeah, okay. So it's not an action for the council to take necessarily, but to get an update received in the public?
Yes, and that's why I was trying to figure out where to put this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so our normal process for, of course, Councilmember initiated items is to put them for a future agenda, to then discuss how we handle it. Is there any objection to this request just being put on a future agenda since it's an update on the information?
No.
No objection?
No objection. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Other communications reports, announcements, or future agenda items, Councilmember Strawn?
I wanted to remind all of us, because I did not know last time, but when we have the parade, that we need to bring candy. So just be prepared and get it in advance to throw to all.
Throw necessarily.
Two, not at. I would like to know where we're at with the community engagement, when we had talked about the, us signing up for various community events, and I haven't seen anything on that. So, and I'm hoping that when we are in the community, that we can have commissioners sign up information, so that when we talk to folks, we can encourage them to sign up or if there's actually a paper form or a QR code or something that we can direct them to, that would be great. But there are many things starting. It's kind of like off with the shot here, many things. And then, I don't know, I've been asked recently about what the GOAT regulations are, and I don't know if that's something that we should discuss when we talk, if we talk about roosters, so.
Okay. That'd probably be perfect to talk about when we have the discussion about the rooster item and how we want to proceed.
Yep.
All right. Anything else from councilmembers as to communications reports, announcements, future agenda items?
Yes, I'll give a quick update on Northeast Children and Family Services. We have our annual meeting in June. Finished my first year as chair, so that's a milestone. Things are going along very well there. We have a very good executive director. That was really an excellent choice, hiring more people, expanding the help for youth and their mental health and their families. And then, in Visit Roseville, we had a meeting, which unfortunately I couldn't get to, but we're still continuing with the signage and some of those discussions. Anything else from that, have I?
No, we just reviewed that. In fact, I'm looking to have that in July 17 work session, to have them come and present that to the council.
And then, the last thing is Arts Roseville is working in conjunction with some other parts of the city to have a 75th birthday party for Roseville on July 22 is the date, and it'll be in the park. And there will be, first part of it will be fire truck and the bones house and all that sort of thing. Then, the second part will be sectioned down by Arts Roseville. There'll be some entertainment and some stories told and some photo-taking, and the historical society will be there. So there will be more information to follow on that.
What was the date?
July 22, if I remember right, and it's from noon until 6. And I think it'll be coming out in the next paper we have. I'm going to look at my calendar to be sure.
Place holder in.
Yep, July 22, Saturday.
I have three things.
Councilmember Schroder. Excuse me, Councilmember Strawn.
I'm not sure, I would love next year to get Mo less May, or less Mo May, or whatever we call it next year. Access to signs more readily available and more easily known. I know some people had signs that, and they had in their yards, but I didn't even know how one, where someone got one.
Because we did have them available, and people did stop by.
Right, right, but I think...
It was for people who signed up with the program officially?
Yeah.
Right, right. And so I think just more access, I think there was better understanding of what it meant this year, less, we didn't have any of those very confused, or maybe one very confused email about why we were forbidding people to do that. But, so I think just promoting that more with the signs access is great. It's just maybe doing something to promote night to unite sooner than later, because I know a lot of folks have parties, but if they want to have the visits and such, the sooner, I know that the number has been down the last couple of years, I mean, let's go with it, whatever.
Yeah.
You know? And then, something I have suggested to Visit Roseville in the past, and the Arts Roseville, is I would love to see an opportunity for us to have more bike racks, specifically maybe artistically designed bike racks instead of the roses, something that's more usable, serviceable, that we could have around the city. There's just a woeful lack of bike racks, especially at our parks, which is really sad. So that we, so if you see any opportunities where we could apply for a grant or some partnership maybe is a perfect opportunity for that, I really think there's appetite for it. There's a lot of interest in biking, moving forward. So I think if we can continue to push that when we can, that'd be helpful.
Great.
The only thing I was going to note, and I think we had talked about it in looking at the future agendas, is that it came up this evening, you know, that MGM is getting one of our THC licenses. We have that limit of seven, I think it is?
Eight.
Eight. So we're...
We're at seven now.
We're at seven, and we have 10 liquor stores, or, well, we don't have 10, we've got a number of them.
Eight or nine, yeah.
Right. That would certainly, if they all wanted one, they're not going to get one. So maybe as part of some of those discussions about the new legislation, we need to figure out, now that we know that they're in the mix as doing the selling, is our number of licenses appropriate? And, but I think there's the whole issue of, I don't know that we're even going to be able to license it anymore, so...
That's what I'm saying, that might be null void.
So, anyway, that would be a topic for...
There's a lot to talk about, the whole law, yeah.
But that seemed the most timely because that, that change went into effect on May 31 in the state law, as far as liquor stores being able to sell them. But then, you know, that starts to get into all the other questions about how we've got our current regulation scheme set up. So I thought that was a little more timely than, obviously, if, if the cannabis sales process for the retail side doesn't happen until 2024 or 2025, we've got a little more time to figure all that out. But this specific piece of it, since we already have something in place, we may want to, sooner than later, you know, have, have something come up on that.
Yep.
For discussion. All right. If there's nothing else before us, the only other item on our agenda is to adjourn.
So moved.